Our meeting got cut.
Okay, we'll say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, yeah, we got everybody here tonight, so we do have a quorum, looks good. Alright, on to the regular agenda. We've got a couple of things on here that we're gonna add on to. Got thirteen A that the city administrator wants to add on, Brent, why don't you explain that one again for everybody?
We have two items to add to the agenda, one would be under Agenda M thirteen. Uh, it would be thirteen C, Authority Engineering Review Plans and Specs. Uh, we'll talk in the details on that one later. And then, right after Agenda Item fifteen, or after fifteen, it'd be Cub Creek Pawn Purchase Agreement Revision, and we'll discuss that. You've seen this before, but there was a minor revision, there's some revisions to it that we need to discuss and get your approval on.
Motion to approve the agenda with said changes?
Huh?
What is the fourteen B?
Oh, we'll do it under fourteen B, correct. Since we're already talking Cub Creek, we'll just do it under.
Okay, so we'll move it to fourteen B?
Yep, just put it under as fourteen B, for Cub Creek. Thank you, Lucas.
You bet.
Got it. Okay, any other changes up, guys?
Motion to approve the agenda with said changes?
Okay, Dave makes a motion, can I have a second? Brian does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Okay, on to the consent agenda, everybody have a chance to look through that?
I did see the vendor invoices, which, is that listed here? I didn't see that one.
It's posted there. Let me see.
That's claim approval list.
Is that the claim approval list? Okay, alright.
Yeah, that's what Becky calls it.
Alright, that's what I was looking for, I could see.
I apologize they're sideways here.
It's alright, it's alright. I'm gonna take a quick look through. No, it's all the ordinary invoices as well?
No. Anybody else see anything they got a question about?
Yes, it is. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave does a second. Any further discussion, any of these guys, or questions?
Yeah, I guess on the, um... Terror Gardens, is that almost the last one?
Yeah, it's like a semifinal.
Okay.
Well, this is the final?
Nope, it's like a semifinal.
Okay, alright.
There'll be one or maybe two more.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, guys? Always got a motion and a second. If there's any other kind of questions, I'll, uh... Motion for to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, consent agenda passes. And on to the, uh, we've got a couple of minutes, minute meetings to go through here, so we'll start with August fifth. Brent, was there anything on there that we were concerned about, or that was just, we had a delay here?
Um, August fifth, it was just a complex being minutes, so we wanted to make sure we had them right.
Right, so that's why I was just double checking. We'd gone through that.
We had a few points where we shuffled items around.
Yep. Okay, anybody got anything?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. We've got a council meeting from August nineteenth. Again, I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary on that either.
Motion to approve the August nineteenth, uh, minutes.
Dave makes a motion, can I get a second? John does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll go to the special meeting that we had here. Take that one as true and cut and dried as well. Right.
Motion to approve that.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
A second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, minutes are passed. Okay, we'll open up this time for any public comments, anybody's got anything you want to say? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move along, Sheriff's update, who's got this one? Alright. Very boring month, right, Lindsay, just tell us that.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad, actually. Um, called normal, hundred and sixty-three, two crashes, no injuries, two reckless driving, one was a juvenile complaint as well. Four-wheelers, little kids on four-wheelers on the roads, and hopefully that's done with now, with school starting.
Yep.
All the parents were called, um... Three juvenile complaints, animals were up, nine again, four alcohol-related, five medicals, thirty citations, fifty-five warnings. Uh, this includes thirteen calls related to traffic complaints, as well as ten calls for deputies attempting civil papers or warrants, with the roundabout construction completed. We have been and will continue to pay special attention to County Road Seventeen, in that area to help educate motorists on the changes in speed limits on that road. Speeds in that area haven't been overly concerning issue to this point, we'll still be monitoring closely.
So there were quite a few speeding warnings and citations in the area of the roundabout now?
Yeah, and actually, I've sat on seventeen quite a bit after it opened, and surprisingly, it's not that bad. I mean, I think the quickest I've seen is seven over, so...
Then no accidents so far, people getting used to the roundabout?
Not that I know of, so...
No accidents or anything that's been reported so far?
It helps with that arrow on there now, so...
That's what I was gonna say, once they got everything marked, it helps.
Helps big time, just, first time I went through was...
Yeah, I got some comments on that too, so...
But, yeah, so, good month.
How old were the kids that were on the, for that?
Twelve and eleven. So, I gave the parents the website, they can go read up on the rules and regulations, and I also sent it to Brent, who can put something on the website or Facebook, a link to it or something.
Right.
So...
No other trends or concerns, see anything different over the last couple of months, or need to be aware of?
No.
Nothing new, okay, good.
Did you notice anything, oh, there's, so there are no drug-related incidents this month, so that's, that's a good thing.
Right.
So, alright.
What'd you comment on for alcohol-related yet?
There's five, and you know, I would, no, four, I would have to go back and look, I didn't see any, um, anything that stood out wildly, but I'd have to check. Frost is reported, so... But I can look at that and get back to it, so... Anything else?
Nope.
Nope, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, John's, uh, AWOL tonight?
I guess, I was just asking Lucas.
Well, he's got Wes Fargo.
I know, that's, should we just, I'll just put him on pause?
I texted him.
Alright, tell you what, let's just...
If, if he is unable to make it tonight, what I would suggest, uh, or Lucas and I will discuss this, and then John, uh, perhaps we do it at a special meeting, where if we have other items, or if we have just that even, where we could dedicate the whole conversation just to that. And there isn't any conflicts, hopefully, uh, but if John's able to make it, great, if he can't, then that's something I think we'll consider.
Yep, so let's just, we'll, we'll leave it on here, and if he makes it, great, if not, yeah, we'll go to Plan B, so... Alright, on to eleven then, for now.
Uh, this item for is liquor license request for Biggers for this weekend, no document.
Okay.
It's just, uh, they're asking, yeah, it's a request from Biggers to have liquor, it's a temporary license, basically allows them for two days, this weekend during Bean Days. Uh, for the sixth, to have it, I believe Chelsea, it's the Fire Hall, um, to have, serve liquor basically across the street. Uh, there'll be the tent dinner going on, and there was requests to be able to have liquor there. Uh, the second night, September seventh, for that, to where they can serve alcohol during Bean Days. Uh, primarily targeted as a street fair, but it would be a liquor license for the day. So, just a two-day event, uh, request of a liquor license, those typically are, should be brought to council for consideration.
We've done this before, we've done this before, so...
Yeah, the seventh, I think it's just kind of their parking lot, really?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they want it to be their parking lot, basically be able to serve alcohol outside, uh, but for the sixth, it'd be across the street at the Fire Hall. And we have coordinated with, uh, Cass County Sheriff's Department for, uh, deputy presence at both, during both events, or at both times, so, both the sixth and seventh.
Are there other activities going on in the area during that time?
Which one?
There'll be, yeah, there'll be hit football on Friday, and then advising date on Saturday.
Well, as far as where the parking lot is, you know, I, I think about how Fargo adapted the letting people walk downtown in certain areas during the street fair or other things, I think that was very successful for them, and diagramming something else similar.
You mean like other stuff for Bean Days going on?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it'll be contained kind of in the, the Fire Hall parking lot, because we, originally, they talked about setting it up in their parking lot, but then we didn't get the road closure, so we didn't really want both of them to run on the road. So, we're trying to contain it just in the parking lot, and then also the seniors center is having an auction. Um, there is a softball, some softball games, I think, that are gonna be going on. So, I only promoted the one game for nine o'clock, but there is a couple of things that will be playing. So, but yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's fun to have people being able to walk around and socialize and...
Yep.
And the way they did it was they diagrammed certain streets up from on Broadway, up to a certain area, and you had a map out. I mean, if people wanted to walk and have a gear to the softball field or senior center, is that so wrong?
It, it is something, you know, we could look at also in the future some more. Uh, one thing you have to keep in mind is if there's public consumption, you know, outdoors, or all of the typical serving area, you do have to have, uh, law enforcement presence, is my understanding, so logistically, we'd have to make sure, something like that, in the future, we have to make sure that we have enough presence to where they're able to see what's going on in all those different areas. So, where Fargo could do it, they have that police or law enforcement presence pretty strong. For us, it's something we could work with Cass County, but, uh, for something like that, this time, I think it'd be hard, and I'm looking at, with you guys there, of just... It's something we consider and expand.
Didn't happen overnight either.
No.
I believe it was a, it was a planning.
It evolves, so...
It evolved with the timing, and I think that's, you gotta have the interest of Biggers and other people that want it. They, they had vendors out, you know, different distillers, and I mean, that's something we could offer just as well.
Yeah.
Especially as we grow.
Uh, one, one part of evolving for Bean Days, in regards to, it's like the tent there didn't have liquor available at it before, so that's new. Uh, expanding the different events, so there's a cluster of events going on, especially Friday night, that's been expanded quite a bit. Uh, but, you know, that is a good idea for how we can grow in the future on that too.
Lucas, you have something?
So, under Century Code and the city's ordinances, for your special event permit, to sell beer or wine, you have to have a designated area, and so that's why you typically have, like, your fire, that's your designated area, is that certain spot, and then for Biggers, it's the parking lot. Um, so it's not just a citywide, they can sell here and then just take it wherever you want. As far as people just bringing their own, um, beer?
I wasn't necessarily saying that, I think it was for purchase more, kind of mimicking what they do down there.
For selling it, there's, you have to have a designated area, that way it basically keeps minors, um, or tells them where the area where you can actually consume, so people aren't buying, going around the corner and giving it to a kid.
And we do have, people can bring their words to the dance, so, there will be some of that on Saturday night.
Okay, anything else, document there, otherwise I think we can, like I said, we've done this before, so this is anything new.
Motion to approve a, a special liquor license for September sixth and seventh for Biggers.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, John does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we need to talk to Matt about Becker First Edition.
Plan and commission recommends approval of Becker First Edition, the plat itself is unchanged from the original plat.
We don't want that.
Oh, come on, Steve. Yeah. But yeah, Matt, nothing's changed since the last go-around with this, right?
Hmm, one adminis, correct, one administrative change I can get, Chuck, the change.
Okay, but I mean, otherwise, it's just a... Yeah, so I guess I'll just, uh, anybody got any other questions?
Want to open up public hearing, unless you did that already?
Well, I guess we can do that. I'll open up for public discussion on Becker First Edition on the final plat. They got anything you want to comment on that? Going once, going twice, okay, I'm gonna close the public here, hearing on that. Okay, Lucas, what else have we missed in here?
That was...
That was it?
Motion to approve the final plat.
Okay, Brian does a motion?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, go ahead, John, what do you got?
Sorry for not being here previously, give me a quick rundown on what you're trying to accomplish.
Basically, I have four and a half acres right now, I'm dividing up into three lots, the front two will be pretty much the same depth. One of them will be eight and three-quarters, one will be about an acre and a half, and then the back piece behind the cemetery, it's gonna be going into the church. So, we're gonna actually sell our assets on there and build on the lot.
Okay, so I got a motion from Brian, a second from Chelsea. Any other discussion, otherwise on to...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What size of the lots, are they eight, one and a half acres?
Yeah, Matt, you can tell him, you got it in front of you?
Acre and a half, acre and three-quarter.
One's eight and one thousand square foot, the other one's sixty-five thousand, or about, just about sixty-six thousand. Eight and a half, approximately two acres or so, and then approximately an acre on the back, number three.
So, you can build a house if it's one point two-five acres or more, right?
On what it's been resowned to?
Yeah.
Uh, he can build a house that is, I think it's a two-thirds of an acre is the minimum at R one.
So, everybody in that developed, no, it's on two-thirds of the acre then?
No, just the lots one and two are zoned R one, and they could be, in theory, subdivided down to two-thirds of an acre.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries. There you go, Steve. Alright, on to Terror Gardens, Matt, what do you got on that one?
Uh, same thing for the plat, uh, by and large, unless there's administrative changes, it's unchanged from the preliminary plat that you saw a couple of weeks ago. And so, just as a, a quick reminder, this is a plat that has the PUD zoning within it.
Lucas, do we need to have a public hearing on that too? Okay, just double checking. Alright, so I'll open it up for a public hearing on the final plat for Terror Gardens Second Edition, anybody have anything you want to say about that one? Going once, going twice, okay, I'll close the public hearing on the final plat.
So, approval for this, this final plat is for the regular subdivision and the beauty.
Okay.
So, we're all aware, and the Park District's getting some land out of this deal too, that, uh, little lot twenty-one. Just that's on the record.
Okay. Where's lot twenty-one on there, is it twenty?
It's a sliver in the top corner.
Ah, got it, yep, okay. Okay, anybody got anything else on, on that one?
No changes since the last second reading?
Okay.
Motion to approve Terror Garden Second Edition Final Plat.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, final plat is approved. Now you have a PUD agreement.
Yeah, so I can take that one, Mr. Merritt, um... Brent, do you have the red line, let me see?
Should be, is that this?
The red line should be on.
Oh, here it is, sorry.
I believe there's two.
I got it.
Let me see if, I believe we put...
Is that the, is that the red line version, or is that the clean version?
Uh, I don't know if I can tell the difference.
I think that's clean, let me see, I thought I put the red line on it.
Says version five.
I'll give you the red line to you here, I thought I did load it.
The red line's just easier, so I can explain what revisions I made. The only real revision that was made to the PUD agreement was, um, related to the infrastructure, and just saying that the developer's responsible for maintenance, operation, uh, reconstruction, repair, removal, all that, before it just said installation. So, the document was revised to, to include that into it, the developer reviewed it and had no issues with that, and that just pertains to lots nineteen and twenty, which is the, the PUD lots, otherwise the city will be responsible for the other stuff. And so that's also reflected on the plat, where the, the two roads that are in the PUD area, and I'll say Private Street on them.
I see that, yep.
And that was done, just so for future councils, for future whoever's over here.
Absolutely, no.
We all know what's going on with that. So, that was, that was done to reflect that.
Okay.
Other than that, um, I don't believe there were any other changes. But basically, it was just modded by, to reflect the party's intent on what, who was gonna be responsible for the improvement.
Right, like you said, he was okay with that, so... Okay.
Should be loaded in.
Guys got any questions on that?
Yep.
Pretty much what it was, just a couple of mobs there, that's what told us a bunch of things.
You guys have some open grassy areas, that's just for maybe recreation of those people living there, or was there intent?
Yeah. PUD, uh, just what's shown there, but it's going to be adjacent to the future, uh, park space to the south east.
It's a word document, right?
And that's one that opens that park space to save this PUD area in the future.
Anything else, guys? Okay, I'll entertain the motion to, uh, accept the PUD agreement. Okay, Chelsea?
Second.
Dave does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, PUD agreement. And we had the thirteen A one there, Brent, let's, uh, go through that one again.
Basically, all this is, is to allow the, say engineer to review plans and specs, so typically ask for authorization from council for that process to begin.
This is done because the developer's putting in the improvements by themselves, so there's, you're not going through the improvement district process for this. So, you don't have all those resolutions that we typically have, resolution to create, resolution directing, engineer to such and such, resolution directing the order to do something else. So, for this one, it's just saying that the, the engineer will review the plans and specs that they have, because it still will be municipal, municipal infrastructure that's going in, so we want to ensure that it complies with the city standards.
Right, so we're authorizing it, is what we're doing here.
So, what about the construction of it then, who oversees that or reviews that?
The city's engineer still will be a part of that process.
Okay. Yeah, we're involved in it.
Okay.
And so that's all laid out in this agreement too.
Okay.
Are those fees covered in the permit costs, or?
Those fees are typically, my understanding, that within the developer's agreement are passed on to the developer, um, once the, the, the development commences, once they start doing that, or however, once we move forward with that project, or if they back out of the development, then we don't, the fees, so that's for any legal or engineering fees that we take on. Admin, legal, engineering, we pass on those fees to the developer, so...
So, anytime Jim and I work on a project for the city, we always separate our time out, and so we can easily track how much time spent for legal and engineering on all these projects.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, we should, we're typi, at least we're legal and, uh, engineering, we typically don't eat the cost on that one.
Alright.
So, what does it we need, just to entertain a motion to authorize the, uh... Engineer to review plans and specs?
Yep.
So...
Second.
Okay, Dave does a motion, John does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thirteen is approved. Okay, so around to fourteen. Who's got that one?
I do.
Jim.
So, I'll face, I'll just redo the memo that I have prepared for the Casper water users, so, as you're aware, the Cub Creek First Edition is currently under construction with anticipated completion November two thousand nineteen. Uh, this addition will be serviced with drinking water by the Casper water users, it's outside of the city service area. Casper water users is currently constructing a one-million-gallon storage water tower, everybody's seen that out there, and that is what is to feed that area and the high school and middle school. The water tower is not scheduled for completion until June of two thousand twenty, and that's been that way since the beginning. They actually have a pretty healthy incentive to get it done in, before June, they have a month of incentive to get it done, so, um, there's a discrepancy there between November two thousand nineteen and June of two thousand twenty, so, uh, the contractor's stalling, the city wa, the water in Cub Creek has asked about pressure testing, flushing, and testing the water main prior to being constructed, and a pavement wall. If you're not familiar, Cub Creek's got a lot of fill we brought into it, Alomar, to get it out of the flood plain, so there's a lot of fill that has to be put on that site, and the contractor is asking about a way to pressure test that line, while there's not the additional four to five feet of fill at the top of it, so that if there's something that they have to fix, they don't dig down through all the excavated material, or all the embankment, they can just dig down and work on it, so, um, we've met with Casper water users, met with the developers represented, met with the city officials, and Casper water does have a ten-inch transmission line on the south side Seventy-Sixth Avenue, and that will be used to feed the water tower. The tower's two-sided, it's got a high-pressure side and a low-pressure side, the high-pressure side is the rural side, and then the low-pressure, lower pressure would be the municipal side. So, their rural water is gravitating towards a more municipal-type system of fifty PSI, sixty PSI, versus the eighty-seven to ninety pounds that they have in rural water. So, um, this infrastructure, this Cub Creek is set up for municipal infrastructure, not for a rural-type pump system. So, um, we have been working with the Casper waters about tapping that line with a two-inch ground hydrant to allow Cub Creek to be pressure-tested and filled, not bacteria, not bacteria-tested, because it can't be flushed, you just can't, there's not enough water in the rural water system to do that, but it would fill the system and allow them to do all the services live with pressure underneath it, so... Um, we have a detail that was provided by the Casper water users for a two-inch ground hydrant, and then all the associated hardware. Uh, the bill of, the, uh, quote we got from the contractor was a total of eight thousand two hundred fifteen dollars fifty-nine cents. Uh, material is four thousand two hundred fifteen dollars fifty-nine cents, and four thousand dollars in labor, they did provide a breakdown. There were a couple of items that needed to be looked at on this breakdown, I met with rural water this morning to talk to them, but, um, the intent is that this should be done so that the water main can be tested, this would be a project cost assessed to the, to the subdivision. This would be a project cost assessed to the, to the subdivision, uh, city costs and so on.
So they had pressure test equipment already designed into the water tower, or this is in addition to that?
This is for, strictly for Cub Creek. This is just to get the water into Cub Creek. Because in order for Cub Creek to get water, the tower has to be up full, and then all, everything around the school has to have water in it.
But in essence, this is a kind of a one-time testing.
Yes, yeah, this would be, yep. And then the Casper would leave that line intact for the future maintenance of their syst- of their system.
If they do need future maintenance.
If they have to flush something somewhere, they'd have this ground hydrant to flush it, so.
To expand on, it's just really quick, is they need to do this in order to be able to test the pipes. In order then, once those check out, then they could do the roads. They won't do the roads until they're done with the, until the water lines have been tested.
It just seems odd that this wasn't factored into the original design.
Well, when we did Lakeview Seventy-Ninth, Sixty-third, those projects aren't gonna be completed until June twenty twenty. With the, uh, the, uh, rapid schedule of Cub Creek to get that online.
So it was, it's a timing thing more than anything?
Timing thing, yes. Yep, because we don't anticipate anybody having structures on their residences move into until next year, uh, Ju- June, I suppose. But it's a matter of getting it tested so that they can feel comfortable enough to put the fill on top of it, and not have to go back and fix it.
So you're talking, what, twelve, fourteen thousand?
No, no, eighty, eighty-two fifteen is what they, and I'm, I'm working with a little bit to try to get that down. Eighty-two, eighty-two sixteen, uh, eighty-two fifteen plus point fifty-nine. I have four thousand in labor and forty-two fifteen fifty-nine in material. And we have a breakdown of the materials here too, so. We'd be looking for, uh, motion to approve that change order.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
I'll second that. Okay, Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Is there another thing we needed to do?
The pond purchase was these two.
So that one, the developer crossed out, uh, that the city gets first priority, I see it in materials.
Which one is it?
Oh, this one?
So because the developer.
That one?
No, where you're caught.
The red line one.
You want to see the red line?
Lucas would like the red line.
So because the developer changed the agreement after you guys already approved it, just come back to the city council for approval. So you go down this section. Right there. Fourteens.
Yeah, there's a red line.
Well, if you do the, there you go.
There you go.
So right there, so we cross that off, so it just needs to go back to you guys saying that you're okay with that, um. I don't know if the city needs that material or not.
Uh, where is this at, Lucas?
Uh, it's Cub Creek.
Page four of A.
The, the pond lots that are in Cub Creek.
Oh, so that was the only change?
Yeah. Yep.
Using that material for his development, is that his plan?
There is, the intent of the developers to use all the material from the ponds to help with elevation within the development.
But it's our dirt. It's the city's dirt.
That was what their original intentions were, I know in the first place, so. Being that that was the intentions of this all along, I don't see any issue with that. Talking with Jim, we'll try to work with the developer, if we do need dirt, we're gonna have, we have a cordial relationship where we should be able to get dirt, but majority of the dirt is going to be.
We didn't have a plan for it, so. Maybe a sweating hill.
Yeah, at, at the time too, we don't, we didn't, didn't really have a need for the dirt, so.
And I would prefer not to have a huge file somewhere. Right, to have enough piles around.
We, we do need a certain, well, two thousand yards of, for the, for the bike path along the intensity, and that's about the only thing we have lined up for the use of that dirt, so.
We're, we're going to work with, we're going to work with the developer to get dirt, because we stockpiled some other dirt on the north end of Cub Creek, working with them, so we'll be working with them. I don't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have too big of an issue.
Becomes expensive?
I don't think we're gonna have too big of an issue, again. The, the little bit that we need for the bike path, I don't foresee being a big issue. I mean, if it becomes an issue, then we'll, then future ponds will hold on to the dirt when we need it, so.
Doesn't it, there's still a continuation, so.
Yeah, they need, there's more ponds that are going to need to be dug, and we'd be able to control that.
They're gonna be bigger and deeper, the future ones, right?
I believe others are fairly deep ponds. So these are all decent sized, and the three that are in city lots are pretty good-sized ponds. And the intention was to have them be fairly deep in order to where you could have recreational opportunities with them, like fishing and being able to use the pond for more than just drainage.
Yep. So basically.
Just need approval of that.
Yeah, confirm motion to approve said changes on our.
So we'll pop, sorry, John makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. See logo, Brent.
Hey, we have this one up there.
This one?
Yep. I've been working with, uh, Congressman Johnson on, uh, group, updating our logo, revising it. Um, we've taken some of the, or the feedback that we got at the last council meeting. Uh, and applied a solid font, so the font is, there's solid color with it being black. Um, and then cleaned up the font to where it doesn't look as much like a paintbrush. Still has some of that feel, but not, or just cleaner there. Now, if it is, anything was to be embroidered with it, any areas that have gradient would be more of a solid color. But for like letterhead, things like that, that gradient shouldn't be an issue. Uh, but we took, like I said, we took the feedback we got from council, applied that. This has been a long process to get the logo. If you're comfortable with this logo, we can move forward, if you are not, we could take longer on this. Uh, to give you a compare, or an idea, we've gone through, it's about probably the fourteenth revision of the logo.
At least fourteen.
Uh, about six, six, eight months, so it's taken quite a while to get where we're at right now. But just throwing it out for a council discussion, if you wanna move forward with one, or with this one, great. Firstly, and from our staff, just kinda doing informal, hey, what do you think? This has been the most well-received one by staff and you and myself, uh, that we've seen. Sort of looking, council thoughts, if you wanna move forward with this, you can, if you say go back drawing board, we can, open to whatever you would like to do on this one. My recommendation would be, uh, for us to move forward on this one, so we can begin using this to help brand the city.
Yeah, we're gonna start doing that, with things that are coming, that put together.
Johnny, you got any, uh, comments on this one? You kinda were the one to miss some of the earlier fun and games of this, so. Just wanted to get some feedback from you, if you had it. No, I mean, I liked this one, this was when I was going out to Virginia, it got sent to me, and I, this one kinda just caught my eye compared to the other ones, too.
I, I'm probably the center, it doesn't, I don't know. I don't know, I, it does either way, it's okay, not, doesn't like, yes, this is exactly what we need, but it's not horrible, so. I thought the other logos were better, so, but that's my, it's not a logo I would see, so.
I, I would probably echo that, that was, I'm, I'm okay with it, I mean, it, it works, it's, it's better than what we have, it's a fresher idea, so I'm, I'm completely okay with this one. I mean, it's, it's not something that's completely permanent either, right, the old logo stuck around for not that many years, as I recall. So, I mean, it'll probably change again in the near term, so, but it's good, I think, and could work.
I think we could use this brand for a while.
I like that it's organic, you know, it's a community, um, you know, we're not promoting a corporation. So it represents people and fluidity and, and, you know, a community, so that's what I like about it, I guess.
You got a discussion? Then I will, uh, look for a motion to work with the city logo.
I'll make a motion.
Chelsea makes a motion.
I'll second.
Chelsea, Brian.
I can't make a motion.
Didn't you design it, or?
No.
No, we hired my sister, but.
It would probably be missed.
Alright.
It's family, and I don't know if there's any.
No, it's fine, we'll resend that, we'll start over again.
She has a different last name.
Alright, I'm gonna.
I'll make the motion approve.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
No, I didn't.
Lucas is on you, but.
Yeah, I, I feel that all of a sudden.
Just think about how hard the rest of us have been working.
I know, I know.
Here forward, if you want, it's not passive. Cause I would probably throw my hands up at this one.
I would just say that's fair. With, uh, staff liking it, correct?
It was well-received by staff, I can't answer for Matt and others, other, just passing around and uh, all the different versions, they're most receptive to this one, um, but Matt, you could expand.
Yeah, I think the city's in the metro, it captures two of the things that makes borders unique. One of them is that, you know, we are the third ring suburb, we're the last suburb. So we do get the sunsets over the, over the fields in some parts, or the, the forest. Um, and we do have the river, and I think we can always, as we grow, continue to highlight the river. I think that this is a great way to start, but we still do have access to the river, I think.
One thing also is the tagline, I mean, the horizon's extended here, that's something we all agreed on very, very early on, and we really loved that. Um, I don't know what your guys' feelings are about the tagline, but, um, it's difficult to encompass that into the logo. And I, but I also think it's kind of important to try to encompass that in the logo, I think it, it brings it together. So that was one of the really big challenges with creating this.
I just have one question as I'm looking at it, is there need to be a period after horizon's extended here?
We could take it out if you'd like.
Was there a reasoning by, it doesn't seem like something that should be in a logo, I guess.
I didn't design the.
Period, no period, they still.
We could take it out, it wouldn't be a big deal. Typically.
Depending, depending on the usage, I mean, it's not uncommon in certain scenarios to use a tagline, and then to take the tagline out. Right, depending on where, you know, if it's gonna be on a shirt or something like that, having a tagline there is typically removed.
No, no, I'm just saying, is there a reason for the period?
Oh, it can be removed, that's.
Whoever raises this mess is gonna, the city council has a grammar discussion.
Alright, so we still have a motion on the table, Brian, Dave does a second, alright.
Thanks, Dave.
All in favor, say aye. Alright, the OGNAM, so we're good. Alright, let's start working that into the system here. I think we're gonna go ten minutes on that one.
Can be painful. Because it, of all things, people have strong feelings about it, and it, it, it is difficult.
Well, it's something that, even though you say that it's not permanent, it lasts a long time, and it.
Well, it does.
Making a decision like this, you now have all these shirts that he's wearing and everyone and all the trucks and all this, this is not simple to change, even in a small town like ours.
To stress the, it is simpler at this time, logistically, because we have a grant to help pay for it. So that would be, one, one positive I point out is that we do have the Partners in Marketing Grant, so it's considered part of community branding. So I believe we'd be able to reimburse a lot of our costs. That, that is a plus item.
I know, I know, but in five years, we say we don't like this, and the city's now ten thousand people, and we get, you know, fifty trucks and this and that. It's just, there's cost to it, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, Jim, I got you up next here.
We'll hit the highlights of the, uh, status report, so. Uh, first thing is, is Northwood Southwood, you approved the final estimate, that project will be complete, we'll do a walkthrough and, and sign off on that one here in the near future. Parks and, uh, trails, trail along Canal Route Seventeen, we had a pre-construction conference last Thursday, the tentative start date is in a couple of weeks. With completion being October, I felt they'd be the completion date on that. Terror Gardens, uh, still private utility, construction is ongoing, that would be the light, the, uh, electrical power, uh, telephone, cable, that type of work. There have been two building permission, permits issued, I believe, in that one, right, Matt? Two building permits for Terror Gardens?
We have three pipeline.
Three, three then.
Yeah, but we haven't started on those yet.
Uh, the punch, punch list, uh, the contractor keeps working on the punch list in the, on their rain days, so. Lakeview Drive and Seventy-Ninth, contractor keeps working on, they're working on water main on Seventy-Ninth right now, Storm Sewer on Seventy-Nine. Seventy-sixth and Roundabout, Roundabout's open, the street lighting is going up today, they said that'd take them a couple of days to get that completed. Um, the city, on that note of the lighting, the city has, I don't know if you were gonna touch on this, Brent, but the city has purchased some flags and, uh, flag mounts for those streetlights to hang three-by-five flags along the main street out to the Roundabout.
Question on the, the lights you're stating, that, so the light poles that are going up along Seventeen, they're actually gonna, they're, that's not separate from the Round- they're gonna do the Roundabout right now as well? I guess the way you guys stated it was gonna be probably another month or so before the Roundabout, permanent lights.
No, yep. And our goal, like, for our flags is to be able to have the flags all the way down. If we do not have light from those new light poles, then we would obviously, everything can not to have the flags up, but we've been what indications have been provided to us is there's full expectation that the lights would be kicked, would be turned on at night later, starting later this week. Uh, Sixty-third Street, contractor's working on Storm Sewer, I think at the end of this week, if, uh, everything holds true, they'll be done with all the underground on Sixty-third Street. And they'll start coming in and preparing the, the base and the street section of that, Sixty-third is on the east side of the school property, west side of Cub Creek. Along that corridor. Uh, Vissel Industrial Edition, contractor moved in a dozer this morning, they're gonna start this week stripping topsoil. And then they're going to start with the underground here, I think they thought probably next week they're gonna be able to get back in there.
So they think they're gonna have some of the, or most of the underground work done before it freezes?
Yep, that's the plan, is having us to get most of it done.
So they won't have roads or anything, it would just be the underground?
They'll, they'll have the roads that, that they can, that they can get done, um, right now, they're kinda focused on the underground, get that put in, so. It's a lot of mains and not services, so that tends to go a little bit quicker, so. Prairie View Overlay, I reviewed the plans this morning for that, we're gonna solicit quotes, um, early this week. And for completion in, either last weekend September or first weekend in October. Third and Fourth Street Drainage, those are two over here that hold.
Oh, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Going back to Prairie View Overlay, uh, what is, how is asphalt doing in cost right now?
Cost-wise?
Yeah.
It's, um, it's very good, and there is, from what I've heard from two contractors, is they would like work in the asphalt world, so. I think that it will be favorable bids when we get them back.
Well, aren't there still a couple other areas that need another overlay that should be addressed and make a bigger project at the same time, if that's possible?
The other one that would be Lost River, that, and we had talked about Roots, but with some anticipation of, um, some construction there here. Yeah, with, with Roots, we decided to back off on that one, uh, until the rest of the area could develop. Since there's talk of future development very soon. Prairie View is the one of most need, uh, Lost River could do it. Quite there, yeah. But I think it's next year would be when we do Lost River, uh, the first round of it. Those are the primary areas of that, but ideally, we would like to bundle them, what you're saying. We do, we do like to bundle them, uh, whenever possible, uh. But, uh, timing wise, I think we're gonna be dealing Lost River next year, or the year after. Roots will be based on, we don't wanna do that, that overlay until the area develops, cause they'll get all beat up anyways. So, that's what we're trying to be conscious of.
Any existing streets in Tomler that need?
Any existing streets in town that are in need of?
And that's where we are going through, reviewing of where, uh, one of our winter projects is like, we're going to be digging into, uh, updating our C, capital improvements plan and really taking a thorough look of, okay, what areas we need to do. Uh, now, we've had a lot of dynamics change with funding over the past six months to a year. Uh, like the Prairie Dog Bill, our sales tax, how we do our budget. To, we wanna make sure that whatever we have for C I P is realistic and achievable. So, that's, so I wanna make sure we look into this winter where we could put something together that makes sense and we can implement.
We're just having a giant wish list. Sewer expansion, need to go back to some neighborhoods and have some, all the input meetings and.
Yeah, there's a lot of areas we need to have deeper talks, what you're saying, sewer expansion. Uh, we know Chestnut has some issues. We're tackling little isolated projects this, this summer and fall. Uh, but the bigger projects, we need to really think out, strategize when it makes sense to tackle them. Chestnut's one. Wall Avenue is another. Those are two bigger projects that are current infrastructure. But then you got all the new developments too that are coming. So, we wanna make sure we're doing a mixture of both, but we're using the money, uh, that we have in the right areas.
And then the last thing I had here was a couple of meetings ago, you approved some work on Chestnut Drive, just lowering of some inlets and some plating and some asphalt work. And that's gonna start here in the next week or so. So, that's, um, all that I had from, from, uh, from the list.
What does that really do to Chestnut Drive for drainage?
Get some of the water off. And then with water getting to the drains, it allows, doesn't have to puddle on there and saturate the subgrade and cause failure. More failure than what it is, so. So, yeah. Yes, very much so.
And now, and that's actually doing some work with the curbs.
Yes.
Right, to, to, cause there were some areas of the curbs where they had sunk enough where there wasn't getting to the drain.
Yes, yes, that is. Okay, anything else, Kim?
Alright, well, I do have one question. Do you have any, anybody have any update on how school's going?
All the, um, reports that I get every week says that they are on schedule. I've seen one of them come through where they're behind schedule and then they got back onto, uh, there's a little blank and it's either a plus, a minus, or a zero. And right now, it's at a zero. So, it's, it's on track. So.
So, West Fargo has not put out, uh, enrollment figures yet either, I think.
Yeah, they have.
Or did they?
Yeah, they said they're.
Four hundred and twenty more kids than last.
What, fifty or sixty behind Fargo?
And they're on, I mean, it's pretty much still on projection. So, that's the thing. I'm okay with that. So, they start projecting that we're gonna.
But, nope, so far, so good.
Um, kindergarten, I don't think they've released that yet. That'll come in a couple of weeks, I think.
Yeah.
Just to get an idea of what that grade is looking at. So. Alright, um, Matt, you're up.
A couple of quick things in the building world. Uh, while our plans examiner and billing inspector is on leave, um, the permit applications are being reviewed by Interstate Engineering. They have a plans reviewer in the Williston area. Um, so our permits are going into his line of work. So, there is a little bit of a delay, but we'll reassess that delay, uh, probably next week and see where we are, if we need to make additional changes to that. Um, more engineering is handling both residential and commercial inspections for the intermediate term. Um, Horace Twenty Forty-Five Project has a new project manager on the StanTech end. Now that Joel has left for the diversion authority. Um, I've, Wendy and Wendy and I have worked closely on the project anyways. So, um, Wendy Van Dyke is the new, Van Dunn is the new project manager. And, uh, we have a, a new updated timeline and they're gonna be at Bean Days as well to talk about that project. And, um, any day now, we're expecting the next round of deliverables to begin to cycle around both this council and the commission, uh, for feedback. And, uh, the public at Bean Days and whenever they wanna come stop by my office, we'll have opportunity to talk to them about it as well. Um, and the third thing is our Economic Development Working Group meets again tomorrow. And, uh, the agenda went out to the council members involved in that. And any other questions about that, I'd be happy to talk about that as well. Estimated number of house permits for two thousand nineteen, uh, yeah, it's about eighty to ninety is what it looks like. Uh, we have a little over eighty permits total now and about fifty-five of those, I would say. Uh, I'll have to look for sure. But about fifty, fifty-five are single-family homes. Um, and knowing what we're gonna get with Terragardens before, um, the building season ends, um, eighty to ninety, I think, is an accurate range.
So, that will be a record for us.
We're almost double. We're about double.
It'd be double last year.
Yeah, last year and last year is where we're at.
Yeah.
That's what we thought.
Yep.
Okay, so the, the Twenty Forty-Five, that includes a comprehensive plan, right?
The, the comprehensive plan is the main part of the project. It's ninety percent of the project.
But I mean, you're saying that that's gonna start coming out for review.
Right, so the first parts of the comprehensive plan should be in my hands any day now. Okay. Um, so that project is three parts. It has a future land use map, which has been adopted by the city already. It has three small area plans, which are effectively design guidelines for high-value parts of town. Um, and then both of those are part of the larger comprehensive plan, which is the baseline set of goals and policies we use to evaluate land use decisions.
So, that'll be good. I mean, if that starts circulating, or at least for internal review, that'll be good next first step.
Right, so I hope to have, uh, some, if not all, of the small area plans circulating, as well as some chapters of the comprehensive plan. So, we can begin talking about what you see that you like and what you wanna change within how the chapters are structured.
Sounds great.
Okay, any other questions for Matt? Alright, moving along. Brent?
Hey, uh, just a couple of quick updates. One, Horace Happenings issue, you should be getting in the mail, uh, within the next day or two. Uh, they were dropped off at the office by the printer, I believe, this morning. We do have copies front desk if you'd like one sooner. Uh, turned out to be a fairly good issue. It's short, to the point, uh, but has a lot of their information about Bean Days, back to school, things like that. Uh, our next issue we're looking at is probably around that Halloween time.
November first.
Yeah, so end October, early November is where timeline is. Uh, for a communications position, uh, Matt and I did another interview last week. Uh, we're looking at options on that and we're definitely reviewing feedback, or him and her touching base on that. I'll meet with Councilman Fennell on, talk, touch base with them here soon and decide what we wanna do with that position. Um, for the temp bond, just a very quick update. If there's any, they're right on track. Uh, the closing paper, draft papers are out today. Uh, we're still looking at September eleventh closing. So, if you're about a little over a week away, which is good. Uh, just a reminder, the interest rate that we got on that temp bond is two point nine eight. Uh, that's pretty darn good for a temp bond right now. Uh, and then the last item I had is the flags. Jim mentioned the flags. Uh, we have three by five flags came in the mail today. We're just waiting for the brackets. Our goal is to have flags up for Bean Days. Uh, so these are pretty good sized flags. We did check to make sure, yes, our light poles can support them. Uh, and then thinking about when they are put up, they're gonna be about sixteen feet in the air, Jim?
Uh, roughly?
Yes.
So, sixteen feet up in the air. So, we wanted to make sure it was a decent sized flag. So, you actually get the feel of having those flags. Our goal would be to have them up for Bean Days and then keep them up until, uh, just after Veterans Day. After Veterans Day, we'll take them down and then we'd be putting them up for the typical patriotic holidays, kind of, you know, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, uh, Veterans Day, Labor Day. That's typically when you would see it up. So, it'll be interesting to see that along those light poles, uh, with the lights being redone along our main area of Biggers, the elevator, that area right now. For, we should be, hopefully be getting those up retrofitted here soon. We're hoping this week. Uh, that'll be a consistent lighting along that corridor and lighting up those flags.
That's really awesome. What about banners too?
Banners, we have not gotten into the banners. We, I believe on the new light poles, we have the fixtures. The new light poles have a banner arm on the top. And that is set up for a two by, ma, up to five foot banner. So, two feet wide by five feet long. And the bottom banner arm isn't a fixture. So, whatever you get for size banners or you prefer for that, you can put an arm on there. But the top one is manufactured into the pole. Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, on the portfolio, reports then. Uh, for me, diversion update, I'm sure everybody here in the room has heard that we did get into an agreement with the diversion authority. Um, so, that got done.
Any feedback so far from other entities or county or anything? No, quiet?
All quiet.
Perfect.
Yep.
No, we like it.
So, um, anyway, that'll be an ongoing thing. I'm sure we'll have some more issues, or more conversation about that. But anyway, we've got that part done and that's, that's the good part. Um, Brian, I wanted to thank you for doing the, for taking over from you last meeting. I, uh, had to skip town there, uh, quickly. So, um, the other thing I was gonna bring up too was, uh, the financial director for the, uh, West Fargo Schools. Mark is gonna be, um, retiring here soon and Levi Bachmeier is taking over for him. We've known Levi for a few years now. Uh, I've known him actually longer than that, but, uh, he worked at the governor's office and, uh. Yeah, looking forward to having him come down and working with us. So, um, the other thing I've gotta mention here too is on Friday from two to five, the Jay Thomas Show, W D A Y is gonna be down here broadcasting from the Fire Hall. Um, so we'll probably be on the air with that. Jim, I don't know if you or Damon wanna sit in on that one too?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah. Anyway, that'll probably have some good chuckles on there. And that's all I got. So, John, who you got? Dave?
Brent, I already gave you the update related to communications first.
Okay, Chelsea?
Um, a couple of things. So, Bean Days is on Friday. And will be on the news from five AM to seven AM on Wednesday with K B L, K B L Y.
That's tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow. I have to get up at four.
Lost, Chelsea.
So, um, you know, hopefully that will bring in some more people to the event.
Yeah.
Uh, Friday, there's gonna be a junk tank setup. So, if anybody would like to go in that. Jim?
Whips and metal car.
Anybody else?
I always thought that the city attorney would look great there.
Yeah, I think he would.
I think the baseball's up my face.
He could probably get out of that liability waiver though. So, we don't want him in there. Um, but yeah, we got a lot of fun, fun things set up. Um, I forgot about the mobile signage for Bean Days. Um, so that's one thing that I'm gonna try to make a solid list moving forward. So, if I'm not planning it, somebody else has a solid list of everything they need to do and it can change hands. Um.
How many vendors do we have now for?
This year, we, I've only got like sixteen. So, it's a little bit less, but we'll have them in the Fire Hall parking lot. And I, I think they'll fit well in there and the game will be on. So, I think there'll be some decent activity going on.
The guys will be in watching the game. The gals will be out walking the vendors. That works.
Some gals like to watch the game.
Okay, alright.
No, I'm just kidding. But, um, but yeah, there is gonna be a softball team playing at the Diamonds, at the Park Board. Parks Diamonds. So, there will still be the Beanbag Tournament and the Bounce Sales is a wrap outside of that. Um, Matt and I are working on a farmer's market for October eleven. It's gonna be, we kinda just squeezed in this pop-up market. It's kinda, it's gonna be a fall market. Maybe, um, we're gonna pumpkins, gourds, maybe some apples, honey, if you guys have any ideas or for produce for the fall. That will be on a Friday night. And then it kinda just something to get us kicked off and, and then hopefully we can get, you know, a few more for next year. And then we'll start planning the Christmas event once Bean Days is over. Um, so I'm really hoping this new communications person will come to all my meetings. The last Thursday of the month, we, I'm doing these meetings and hopefully that will help make it easier for me. And then if I could get somebody that's kind of as dedicated to these meetings, that knows everything that's going on, it will help me kinda a little bit because it's, would be easy to get burnt out. Um, but I think the events are really, really important. So, I, I do wanna make a good effort with this and, and put in.
I was gonna ask to that point, did you get very good response on the event planning meeting that you set up?
Um, well, I should have posted to Facebook earlier and I'll try to do that from now on. Um, but I do get a lot of like the, like Lions comes, Senior Center, the church, they're all really active. I'd like to get, I emailed P T O and, um, I'd like to get somebody from the Park Board to show up. Um, I, um, you know, any, any groups that participate, I wish they would just, they don't have to come to every single month. But if they can just come to once in a while, the K in the loop and, you know, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and all that would make it a lot easier. So. And then, um, we, my sister and I just threw this Horace Happenings together really last minute. So, but Brent and I have been talking about, um, how we get the communications director on, on board and, and, and in the groove of things. That she can maybe help us out so that we can be consistent with these. We can get the ads consistent and looking good. And we can get some more, um, maybe some columns going and, um, you know, more information that people know they can get it to us by a certain date and everything's kind of on track. And I think we'll work on that. I think it'll be really helpful. So.
Great.
Okay, Brian, what do you got?
Uh, one thing I was gonna, um, point out, I think we're gonna start a, a new, another round of the capital improvement plan update and revise that. Uh, maybe we'll have, schedule another meeting here in September to go through that, Jim, and, and, uh, a deeper dive. Uh, to look at some of the, maybe like the street improvement, maybe go back to the drawing board and from that old recommendation. I, I know that's coming up on four years old now. So, the situation has probably changed quite a bit since then. So, we probably need to do another reassessment of some of the road construction, uh, projects that we would recommend going into twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty. Uh, and then, uh, plan a little bit further forward into, you know, like Brent pointed out with the Prairie Dog funding and so forth to, to prioritize some of those projects. So, I think it's time for us to do a deeper dive on the capital improvement and, and revise that again, uh, get that updated. Um, I just had a question for Brent and I lost it. God, God. It was, yeah, it'll come to me after the meeting is done. So.
Okay.
No, that, that's probably the big thing. It's getting, you know, getting that kicked off, getting the capital improvement update.
No, we need to do that, cause I know it's time. There's, there's a lot of stuff that's changed here, just even the last year.
So, we haven't, we haven't really done a thorough update of that plan. You know, even from an equipment standpoint, from a building standpoint, we need to, we need to get a single sheet of music that we're, was current.
Well, we've also had a state of flux going on too. So, a lot of things that have.
Correct. A lot of things have changed.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, that's everything on the agenda. So, somebody's got a.
Motion me a drink.
There we go. Dave did a motion and John did a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are done. Thank you.